All right, it's six o'clock, we're gonna start the meeting. This is the City of Merrill Committee of the Whole meeting. It is December 3rd, 2024. We are in City Hall Council Chambers at 6:00 PM. Next item on the agenda is the roll call. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Andrew Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Michael Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Mayor?
Here.
Ms. Furmanek?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Rick? Mr. Weiss?
Present.
Ms. Rukowski?
Here.
Mayor Hough?
Present. All right, next we have public comment. Public comment. Hearing none will move on to general agenda items for consideration. Consider placing the minutes from the October meeting on file.
I'll make a motion to put the minutes on file.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to place the minutes of the October meeting on file. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have discuss heating issues at the Street Department. Kind of like the December surprise for us here, so. Justin?
Yep, I'll apologize first for not having this in the packet, but you got the information at your desk, and I guess it's a relatively simple problem. We have four Modine shop-style furnaces that were found to have cracked heat exchangers this fall during our normal annual inspection. So, that's generally end of life for a furnace, they are quite old already. So, I guess the issue is not so much, you know, when or how do we replace them, it's how do we pay for it? And that's why we're coming to tonight with hopefully a plan, or a proposed plan.
Emily?
Yeah, I talked with Rod about this, and my thought was to see what kind of carryover we have for 2024, to see if there's some funding available to use, and apply that first, and then if not, or to apply the difference to the, edit to the capital budget for borrowing.
We would come back with a budget amendment, probably beginning of March or so. And again, the total is 27,000. So, we're hoping, you know, that'll be under 20,000, which would be increased on the borrowing. This would be a borrowing item.
This is just the proposal, or is this the one you're going with, or are you reaching out to other people?
There's quotes behind there, that, the ones that we have been using, so.
Yep, that's a quote from our normal contractor that does our HVAC work.
But you wouldn't check with other contractors or other suppliers at all?
These are the ones we normally use. We can, and it's, it is over 25,000, but I think we'd like to stick with the same controls and the same manufacturer, so. We'll check.
Okay.
Do we get a cost to repair?
Ah, just like with a home furnace, they said that anything, these are 20-plus years old, once a heat exchanger goes, there really is no repair. If you can't get parts, it's generally not very cost-effective to put them into such an old furnace that still has all the old controls.
So, no?
No.
Was there, were the heat exchangers ever replaced in the past?
No, not to my knowledge. And, like I said, they're inspected every year, they were either not seen before, or they all, I mean, so there's two in each building, so each one is of the same vintage, you know?
Right.
Presumably, they started to go at the same time. And our plan was to start rotating them out slowly, one at a time, but we're getting kind of forced into it earlier. And I mean, we are obviously supplementing with the other furnaces right now, they're shut off and disabled, but the issue there is the other furnaces are making up a lot more, you know, work right now. This is about a third of each building is handled by these four, so.
When was this discovered?
A couple weeks ago during our fall inspection.
Do we have any emergency fund head off for something like this? Emily? Nope. Any cost savings from last year's winter?
Right, we do have, that's why the thought was to look at any carryover, what we haven't spent in 2024, and see if we can use some of those funds. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And if you remember, Emily did include in our '25 budget, you know, contingency in a couple of departments for things like this. Not even, that was actually before this even happened, so.
Is the Committee of the Whole fine with doing it this way? I mean, I don't think, we don't have a choice.
Yeah, we don't have a choice, we gotta get it done.
All right.
Yeah.
We will bring it forward once, you know, the repairs are done and '24 is somewhat closed out, we will bring a budget amendment, so.
All right, anything further?
Are we going to get another quote at all, or, I mean, I understand the sentiment, but I also think that, you know, it's the right thing to do, is to get another quote from another company.
And a cost to repair. Sure.
I'm not so sure about the repair cost, but the.
Well, I've had one for.
At this point, if they're over 20 years old, they're a bigger pain in the butt to repair than they are to just replace. You're gonna get more life out of just replacing it.
And we'll save money on the more efficiency of the product.
Most likely.
It's winter, I mean, it's late.
Why can't we find this in you? Everybody just wear more clothes?
All right. Anything further? Hearing none will move on to discuss options for city attorney's position after city attorney Hayden retires. Rod?
What we're looking to do is, early in January, come up with a RFP to put out with existing law firms to see if they would be interested in contracting with us. And before we do that, we would sit down and go over the duties that we expect, and the, kind of the hours which we would expect, so we could get an accurate quote from any law firms that might be interested. We're looking to get that back sometime middle of February, and have another meeting to compare those costs with the existing costs, to see if it would be advantageous, or if it's close, to see what cost it would be for what we call a convenience, because it is nice to have somebody here, and we're the priority for that person. They've tried this in the past a couple times, and it seemed like it was always secondary, get in line, and even some of the conflict of interest with municipal court, if they have a client that they're representing, and they're supposed to be representing us, and just to sit down and compare apples to apples at that point. If it is determined that it is to our advantage to keep it in-house, you know, it'd be nice to have somebody in here by, you know, middle to end of May, so we could have a little bit overlap. It's kind of the thought process, and we're looking for input from you guys. Any input?
I think that sounds like a reasonable approach.
Yep.
It does, but I hope it does not wreck the efficiency of our government because of firemen out to another private entity. That's a worry I might have.
And that's, that's the big thing, as far as residents or anybody that we cite for violation, or ordinance violation, or some of the stuff that Darren does that goes through municipal court. And the fee structure here is, from what I understand, considerably less than it would be across the street, and the timing-wise, and.
I mean, in making the speed and making decisions, I mean, whether it be land or criminal, whatever he deals with or she deals with, timeliness is important.
Yeah, it wouldn't be criminal in municipal court, but even what our officers go through to gather evidence and everything else, I think, and Corey had a little bit different opinion, but what gets convicted here versus, or bargained here, or convicted here versus you go across the street and three-quarters of it gets thrown out, that seems to be the, and I don't know, maybe you can speak to that, Gus, but it just seems to be that's the case, and it gets disheartening for our officers to do a ton of work, and then to turn around and not have it prosecuted.
Yeah, I hate to see a line, you know, and not things getting done efficiently. That's my fear of privatizing.
No, I think we did get a price, I want to say, two years ago, and then almost six years ago, and it was more than what we were paying, but it doesn't hurt to put it back out there and see, kind of, compare apples to apples, and have the conversation with numbers in hand.
I agree, I agree with that.
I just. I think if we're gonna look for an attorney to replace Tom, big shoes to fill, by the way, that we make sure that, one, he's a litigator, so we're not outsourcing as many cases as we did in the past, and make sure we have a good sound contract. So, I mean, you know, that's all I gotta say, is if we're gonna hire one to take Tom's place, then let's make sure he's a litigator, and, or the other option is outsource it to a firm.
That's one of the other issues that we may run into. We go to hire somebody in-house here, chances are, it's probably gonna be someone fresh out of school, or someone that's done everything, and it's kind of, you know, got 10 years till retirement, or less, and it's, we'll see what we get, you never know.
A couple of years ago, we had an attorney local who had previously been the acting city attorney, came up with some numbers, and he actually was looking at like a $50,000 to $80,000 a year savings, if he would do the work, versus what we had in place then. At that time, we didn't know where Tom was in the retirement plans, so that's why we were exploring that. I did ironically look at something the other day in newspapers.com, and came across the articles from 2002 when Tom was hired, it was on parchment paper, but I was able to read it.
Yeah, yeah, I get you.
And there were some complaints about timeliness and responses from that system previously, but I do remember speaking to Ken Neff, who is Chief of Police, and said, "How did it go when you had that outside person?" He said, "Actually, it was very well done." He said, "We didn't have any complaints." So, I guess there's two different feelings here, but we'll see what our RFPs come back with.
Yeah, and I think we need to put out an accurate RFP that reflects the number of hours that we kind of anticipate, and then, you know, depending if it's local, or someone in Wassa, how much conflict of interest in outside representation, a bunch of those other things that we would still have to do.
I think one of the other pieces that would be helpful is to actually have some kind of numbers as far as load, caseload, or whatever, you know, how many times a year does Tom go and involve himself with things that come about with working with the building and ordinances, or go, you know, what, where does his time go, and what is spent on what, so we have some idea that way.
And that's gonna be part of the workflow that we'll put into the RFP, as far as expectations.
Rod, have you talked to any other communities that have outsourced their city attorney position, and what their thoughts were?
We have. Some of them don't have the municipal court that we deal with here. Some of them are smaller. I think it can work, I'm not saying that. There is a convenience that you pay for, and I know, I've discussed it both with, well, with department heads today, and then with Stephen Laurie in the past, it's nice to have somebody that, I mean, you can pick up the phone and, or walk in the office and talk to. It is a convenience that you're paying for, but I, sometimes you can't put a number on that, and everybody, I wouldn't say in government is more of a service than it is widget manufacturing as far as production. It's not 100% production, I'll admit to that.
Anybody have anything else to add?
So, in February, we'll see both sides of the story.
Well, I, we'll work up an RFP, and I'd like to have another meeting where we can all go over that, and kind of agree on the RFP, at least have some input into it, so when we do get it back, there was not something missing that one of, well, one of all of us may have thought something differently, so I'd like you guys to review that before we put it out.
Would an outsourced person come to our meetings like Tom does?
That would be part of the requirements.
Okay.
Previously, they did.
They did, or they didn't?
What was that?
Previously, the, when the city attorney was outsourced, he would have done functions such as this.
So, we did have a city attorney outsourced position in the past?
Yes.
Oh, didn't know that.
Between when God left and when Tom came on.
God left.
And I don't know how many years that was.
It wasn't, I'm not even, I don't think it was even a year, Mike, and I honestly have to look at it, I don't know.
This was July, you know.
Okay.
All right, we'll move on to review and discuss Merrill's strategic plan, included in the packet for review for the meeting. LaDonna has.
Five pages.
Yeah. A number of changes.
Somebody asked, and so somebody answered, so, you know, feel free to use anybody else's input as you choose.
I guess we can do this two ways, we can go page by page and make changes now, or if you had a chance to review it, please submit those to Steve, or Laurie, or myself, the changes that you would like, and we will sit down and incorporate them, and bring it back for, not a final review, but a little bit more of an update with everybody's input. That's up to you guys. If you had a chance, and you want to go over it tonight, and make the note changes, otherwise, provide them to one of us, and we'll make the changes. We did have a department head meeting today, and we went over it, and had some recommendations, but we want to get everybody's input into this, and there was a few members from the public that were involved with this last time, that I handed them out to also, to ask for any changes. Just to note some of the big ones, you know, we have done quite a bit on the marketing aspect of things.
And we did, Scott did provide some input for that, and Hallie as well, so.
And you, and Hallie, yeah, and I think there's some boxes that we can check, and with all these, though, the evaluation method, and getting back to the first item, we really haven't followed through on reporting back to the council as far as where we are on all these items, so there has to be some follow-through on, on both the council, the mayor, myself, as far as a report, and some of them say annual reports, some of them I guess what's the council's pleasure, how would you like to handle this? Would you like to go through it page by page, or kind of submit any opinions you guys have, and we'll make the changes and bring it back again?
Could you refresh me, who's on the strategic plan committee?
There was several people from the community, I know Mike Robbin kind of headed it up.
It no longer exists?
No.
It was, it was just a ad hoc, not even ad hoc, it was just a group of.
This was authored in what year?
2019.
Is that something we have to do every few years?
Well, it's at the end of its.
Every five, normally.
Kind of its life, I mean, every.
Four years.
Four years.
So, Mike Robbin was on, or who else?
I think Gene Bevel, there were.
John Greenwood.
Sharon Anderson.
Is there a reason why we just don't create another ad hoc committee, and have them go over it, and bring it to the committee?
I guess we didn't want to reinvent the wheel on this, because we already have the plan here, so we were just kind of modifying it, and a strategic plan should be a fluid plan, where it's, because it's constantly changing, so.
I do think some of the points that, like, for example, that Scott sent about being more specific about some of the development, like, what kind of development are you talking about, you know? At that time, I think it was, you know, four or five years ago, it was just development, but is it housing? Is it job development? Is it, you know, so I think the specificity of it would be good. I personally think if we're going to be expanding in the airport, that we need to be doing things to publicize the great airport that we have, and where it's going, and I think we really need to talk to the Airport Commission about trying to get them to expand into some of their, you know, apprenticeship things, things to do to make that worth the investment long-term, too. So, those were some of the suggestions that I had.
Well, are the four priorities that we have listed on page four still our top priorities? And I guess we looked at it today, and rather than ask it in a question, let's change it to increasing City of Merrill's tax base, attracting more people, young and old, to live and play in Merrill, create an acceptable balance of taxes and municipal services in Merrill, increase citizen civic involvement in government issues in Merrill. I mean, rather than ask how, how can, how does, those are our priorities. Are those still our top four priorities?
Personally, I would think so.
I know when we did this plan, we had talked about civic engagement, and I kind of, I wouldn't say talked, all this blue in the face, there, people don't build front porches anymore, they don't want to be involved unless there's a hot button issue, I mean, you can see how many people are here tonight, or at typical meetings, it doesn't mean we shouldn't, we shouldn't involve the public, we should be open and honest, but we can only go so far as social media, and publicizing everything we do, and we still don't have anybody at the meetings. I know, Tom, you got a take on Civics 101, or?
Yeah, we, um, it is absolutely shocking, and I've been in this business a long time, be it here, cities up north, central Wisconsin, people have no idea how government works, from the national rate to the local level, no idea. They don't know whether I'm the judge, whether I'm the prosecutor, whether I'm their lawyer. People really don't understand, I've got this mantra down, I come in, "I'm not your lawyer, I'm the bad guy, I'm here to discuss," you know, if you want to think I represent anybody, I represent the police officer, or the building inspector that wrote the ticket, but here we are, we can discuss some options, and we've got some options. One thing I, sidebar, one of the reasons I really like municipal court is, it's much more flexible and time-friendly than here, we can, I can get things back here quicker than I can across the street. But seriously, we're dealing with a citizen base that doesn't know what you guys do. They have no idea, they have no idea what your purpose is, they have, guaranteed, most people who walk in here have no idea who their alderman is, they might know who the mayor is. And that's, that's just a fact, and it's not meant to be a criticism. I think the other side, look at, people, things are running so well, that they really don't worry too much about it. Taxes are too high, I agree, everything's too expensive, you know, I paid 2,000 bucks for my first brand-new car 100 years ago, all their brand-new cars are a little more than that now. But people have no idea about the, and it's really entrusted to us to make it work, make it as transparent as we can, that if you have a question, we'll answer it, come on in and watch how it works, you'll find it's pretty boring. There aren't, we're not hiding any bodies anywhere, but that's, that's the problem you've got, you know, and the difference between county, and city, and state, lost, I guarantee you that, and that's, that's a sad commentary. But, but that's the way it is. On the other hand, it's a great tribute to the quality of government and services we provide here. People are comfortable living here, they don't worry about that too much, they don't worry about that too much. I'd be happy to help any way, whether I'm here or out of here, in the strategic plan, and back up one step on the agenda in the transition, you know, I'm not, you know, I've got a date to retire, but I'm certainly happy to come back in here and help and assist whoever would be sitting where I am. You've got a good city here, you've got good people that work here. As long as I'm gone, this little tirade here, you know, I mean, when I moved here, my goal in my head was to be here two years. That was, that was my plan. You've got a very special community here. I'm a very fussy guy, so I wouldn't stick around if it wasn't good, but I mean, really, this is a very good place to live and work, and you've got a good organization here, there's some really good hard work and smart people. It's so good that people don't need to worry about what we're doing in here. Everything's too expensive, I agree, but things work pretty well. You've got a good, safe, clean, very well-presented community on many, many levels. We just got to keep that going.
If you look at the four items that are on page four on the bottom, we may want to reprioritize them, I guess, I would say the how can Merrill create an acceptable balance between taxes and municipal services, I mean, that's, I think that's our top job here.
I agree.
Yep, that would be number one.
Especially for the council, I mean, it's, well, all of us, but without growing our tax base, we can't afford to keep the existing services in place, so, I mean, that's probably number two, and then attracting, attracting people, the second one would be number three, and then, again, that, the last one, I know it's, it's something that we have to say, but, I mean, is that, is that one of our priorities?
I actually think it probably will become more relevant in the near future, to be honest with you, and that's just my personal opinion.
Well, I mean, I hope, I hope people do get more involved, don't get me wrong.
You know, I just think, but I agree with what Tom said, I mean, I have had many people say to me, "Well, what does an alderman do? What, you know, who, what does that mean?" What, you know, and, or I've had other people say, "Well, you know, you mean the meetings are on, you can go to the meetings? You mean the meetings are on the website? How do, where's the webs," you know, I mean, so there's some very basics that, you know, would be beneficial to be, and how you do it, and what, you know, of course, the people who are interested are gonna dig and find out, and people who could care less are gonna continue to care less, but I think that, that desire to care more is going to increase in the future.
I think what it comes down to, everybody wants to be transparent, and tell everybody what we're doing, but who's listening is, I mean, that's the involvement portion, that they only listen when they want to listen, and, again, not saying we shouldn't do anything, but where do we want to set our priorities?
They only listen when they want to listen, they only hear what they want to hear, so, it's gonna be what it is for the most part with that one, but I agree with what you said for the, our first three of how to order them, because, I mean, we need to attract more people here, but we need to make sure everything's balanced first, so that way everything continues to run as smoothly as we can.
The thing with, with the strategic goals, though, there's really no, when you're talking about how to prioritize them, they all work together, so you don't necessarily, you know, one year, one area is gonna be of more significance than the other, so you're not necessarily putting them in a numerical order. I mean, they all do work together, just in different timeframes. That's something to keep in mind.
When we're talking about growth, I've heard a term since I came back to Merrill, and was, Merrill's gonna be a cottage community. Is that still supposed to hold true? That term, Merrill's, Merrill, we're gonna make it a cottage community.
Cottage or bedroom?
Bedroom.
Bedroom? I heard cottage, cottage bedroom.
More of a bedroom.
So, we're not act, you know, are we out there actively trying to find small businesses to move manufacturing to Merrill?
We are.
Who? Who's doing it?
Between Link County Economic Development, they're doing some of it.
I hear a committee, give me a name, who's in charge of it?
I'm very impressed by her, Sarah Gil, is her name, right?
Sarah Gil?
Yeah.
She brought business in?
She just started.
Oh, Sarah, I know her.
Yep, no, and Steve and I are both on that committee, and there's a couple people from the county that are on there, and.
I just, I just hate that term, bedroom community, cottage community, for Wassa, or whatever it was supposed to be, you know, if we're not gonna actively pursue, you know, manufacturing, or any other kind of new business to Merrill, I just, we're not gonna get much growth, I mean, so, why we don't have a full-time employee just out there hitting the road, trying to find them small businesses that want to come to Merrill, "Hey, we have this lot, we have this location, we can do this for you and that for you." If we don't have somebody out there actively doing that, then I don't see the point of any of this.
That is, that is part of my job, part of the mayor's job. We do follow leads, we do have contacts, we are going to a seminar tomorrow night to see where the industry's at, or the real estate action is at, so we are doing some of that.
And I think when, when it's referred to as a bedroom community, it's, I don't think that that's something we said, that's what we want to be, but I believe it's something we need to be, because we're too close to Wassa to try and compete directly with Wassa, so I think we have to be the things that Wassa. so I think we have to be the things that Wassa can't be. So, that's not to say we can't have small industries here, we can't have those things here, but they're more likely to go to Wassa first or Weston because of where things are going there, so it's not like we said, yes, that's what we want to be is the bedroom community, but we have to, we have to go with what we can offer that's different, that's adds on to the value, I mean, people think nothing of driving that 10, 15 minutes between Wassa and Merrill anymore, that's nothing, so if they want to live here and work in Wassa, it's not what we necessarily would like them to do, but it's a reality, so.
And over the course of my lifetime, and I know that's only 32 years, I've seen so many people do that and they love living here because of how quiet it is even compared to Wassa, but their job is in Wassa.
I am not disputing that, what I'm saying though is, you can live here and work in Wassa, but gosh darn it, we have to grow in Merrill. We want to build a tax base, we want more taxes, we're not going to do it by sitting on our thumbs saying, "Oh, look how great Wassa is," but, "Well, how's you here?"
And I'm not saying that...
Let's go actively get on the, get in the pavement and go knock on some doors, there's people out there begging for a city saying, "Bring us here because we're going to get a tax break or we're going to help with new roof or pave," whatever.
They are doing their homework though also, they're looking at the workforce, you know, if somebody wanted to bring in 500 jobs here, there's not 500 people here to fill those jobs, so they're looking
I didn't say bring in Harley Davidson.
I'm just saying.
Although, it would be nice.
But you can go all the way down to 200 jobs, I mean, not to say that we shouldn't try or do those things, but anybody that's responsible in putting a business plan together, they're going to see if the workforce is there. And what would happen is they would cannibalize from the existing businesses that are here, not saying that we're not looking or providing for those, but they're also doing their homework and saying, "Well, it makes more sense for us to be centrally located where we can draw from Edgar, Anigo, Wittenberg, you know, in Wassa." So, we do have some of those issues to deal with and they're not falling in our lap left and right and we are looking for them.
I don't think there's a factory in Merrill that has a sign up front that says we're good probably elsewhere.
I agree.
And I know one factory and it's a very reputable company, one of the best city has to offer, they're employing state inmates, busting down from McLaughlin, McNaughton, that's hard up there.
Yeah, and there's one business that
Well, let's build them some housing.
One's business that was here or is here, you know, they would have expanded in their existing if they had the workforce and they ended up building in Marshfield, I know, a new plant because the workforce was there. So, we'll provide you the buses, bust the people up here, so, no, they didn't agree with that.
Is there anything missing from the list? Other places I've worked have had, you know, like a quality of life items or public safety or providing services, you know, are there other areas that we want to include in this list, priorities?
I think some of the quality of life stuff is covered in attracting people.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
Under the strengths, number eight, has high-quality services provided by community employees, experienced department heads, fire EMS, police, street sanitation, water sewage utilities, Merrill Brown, I don't think a lot of communities have all that stuff, maybe not a full-time fire department or EMS.
Well, that doesn't even include our library, our enrichment center, I mean,
Well, that's covered, that's number 10.
Okay, well, but even still, like our library, our perks department, I mean, we've got so many things that a lot of other communities don't even have the opportunity to have, so.
I guess if everybody can
To Dona's point, airport can be included in it.
Yeah, that too, yep.
And that might be
Upgrade, upgraded airport.
As far as the tax base could get covered there and attracting people to the city, it could get covered under both those items. I guess unless somebody has something, some other way to do this, please go over this and even if you just take a copy and make comments on that and get it back to one of us where we can put everybody's thoughts together and make the updates and then present it and then maybe have a conversation. This was just a step one, I guess.
I have a couple of questions on page three. What is, what was the thought with the indoor multi-sport complex?
Because it duplicate what they did in Rhinelander?
Pretty much. It was kind of like the dome.
Oh, I didn't.
Rhinelander has a dome up there.
Oh, okay.
Similar to what they did in Everest also, but I mean, that's on a grandiose scale there.
There's my thoughts is, why do we have to do what everybody else does? Why can't we be what's unique to Merrill? That's, I mean, that in itself, I think, is a good selling point for Merrill, instead of always trying to catch up and do what everybody else just did or be five years behind what Wassa did and five years behind what the next one did, it makes more sense to me to accentuate what we have that's different than anybody else has.
Well, I think what Wassa did on the river, we'd like to do something like that here, I mean, to that point, we're five years, 10 years behind them. I know what you're saying, let's be our own and not follow Madison to point to Wassa. We do have people that work here that drive from Wassa though.
So, you're saying the department head should be acquired to live within the city limits, is that what you're saying?
Sure, bring it on, all of us are going.
I'll vote for that. Keep the money in town.
There must be a lot of people from Anigo too, because I know I joke back from Anigo
Should aldermen live in town?
Friday night and there was a lot of traffic.
What's that?
Should aldermen live in town then?
Absolutely.
Does that sound like a good way to move forward?
Yes.
Please go over it, make comments, get it back to us.
I dare you.
You can go over it again, LaDonna, I know
That's my challenge to the rest of you guys, I dare you.
All right, hearing nothing further, we'll move into closed session. The committee may convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub E, for the deliberating or negotiating on purchasing of properties, public properties and investing in public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session to discuss potential acquisition of real estate.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to go in the closed session, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Haas?
Aye.
Alderperson Andrew Taylor?
Aye.
Michael Taylor?
Aye.
Alderperson Meyer?
Aye.
Alderperson Ferminick?
Aye.
Alderperson Lass?
Aye.
Alderperson Weix?
Aye.
Alderperson Rakowski?
Aye.
Alderperson Rick, are you on the phone?
Yep.
Nope. Okay. Eight out of nine.
Thank you.